We are live with another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. We also have Kim and Jessica and Colin and a special guest trainer for you here today. One of my favorite people, Dr. Colette Colonon, she is a Young Living Gold Leader. And she's going to share some really exciting stuff with us today. So hi, everybody. As you're coming in, I see a bunch of people pouring in right now. I'm sure you're really excited to get that email this morning. I hope you really loved the fun little gift that was in there with the shooty rainbows and dancing flowers and stuff. We always, always love to put a little bit of levity into our day. I hope you appreciated that. So, so today, I really wanted to bring Colette out to chat with you guys. Because Greg actually put a post in our Facebook group yesterday, you know, kind of asking you guys what, what you most want help with, like what you're, what you're struggling with or what you're trying to figure out right now, whether that's with you, with your team, and so on. And one of the things that kept showing up for me was, you know, kind of a reflection of the time that we're in right now, right? Like with, we're still in shutdowns, right? We're still social distancing. We're still not meeting face to face with people. The, you know, the sort of old school, if we use the old sales terminology, belly to belly is just not a thing that's happening right now. Because, you know, it's super not safe or it's super not legal, depending on, you know, how you feel about things. So, and where you are. But anyway, that's a whole conversation for another day. But I wanted to help you guys to, to see how, in spite of all of the things going on in the world right now, you can still sit down with five, 10, or more people per week, every week, and get a steady, consistent flow of new customers into your Young Living business. And, and guys, it's a super low tech strategy. Like, it's, it's really, it's kind of easy. So, I'm really excited to share this with you guys today. So, we're gonna sit with Colette. We're going to chit chat here. And if you brought any questions with you, with you today, if you need help with something, please go ahead and start putting those questions into the Q and A, because we are here to help you during this time. We will have two, two live reviews of Get Oiling websites as well, as usual, at the close of our training here at the beginning. So, let's open up, Colette. Tell us a little bit about sort of your, your background with Young Living. And yeah, and then I'm just really excited to hear you share how you're doing this.
So, I've been in Young Living for five years and, you know, got my kit and started the business. My first month, just by selling kits by mistake.
By mistake?
Going around town, telling people all the great things that I was experiencing. And so, I just rolled right into the business.
Fantastic, fantastic. I love that. So, I know that, you know, because we, we work together directly on a lot of stuff. And I know that one of the things that you really love about this business, and really, one of the things that you love to teach about this business is sort of the human connection, right? It's the, you're very red, you love to close, right? But it's very, you get a lot out of this sort of communication process. So, there were a couple of things we were talking about when we were chatting earlier today that I know we're going to get into a couple of the key ways that you get in front of a lot of people every week. But there are some kind of foundational things that people really need to understand and know first, before we even start pursuing that. So, what is, what does that look like for you? If somebody was gonna, you know, just sort of start their journey right now, what are some of the key things they need to know to be able to get in front of a lot of people and get a lot of new members?
So, if you have a cell phone, you have contacts. So, you can go to the bottom, you know, iPhone, you can go to your contacts, go to the bottom. I have 1,400 contacts. Because one thing I learned right at the beginning of this was you meet somebody, get them in your phone. So, I would do the old, hey, I want to remember you, can we do a selfie? And I would pop their picture with their name and phone number. You know, maybe they want a recommendation for a file from Home Depot, or maybe they were actually interested in oil. So, I collected, I've been collecting people like this for years. And you can do the same thing on Facebook, you can do the same thing on social media, you just collect them there. So, then you, I start, I go through my contacts. And this is actually something I've learned more recently with a training with Richard Bliss-Brook. He's a phenomenal, authentic network marketer. He does coaching in that, and he also is, does a something called Momentum Masterclass, where I've learned a lot of these skills. So, he taught me, go through the contacts and just start connecting with the folks. So, I don't like contacting them, hey, I haven't seen you since high school, you want to buy some oils, right? But, you know, it's been a different year, I want to connect, I want to say hi. And to do this at a high volume, such that if I do this with, you know, 15, 20 people a day, somebody's gonna write back and say, yeah, I'd love to connect with you. Then those conversations, you know, they often lead to, hey, so what are you doing? But the, the skill that I have learned that's been so successful is to be really curious about people. Not to just call people and dump Young Living on them. I did that at the beginning. But I learned to reel it back in and just be authentically, you know, curious. Occupation, spouse, children, clubs, spare time, travel, vacations, retirement, health, fitness, friends. And to really, and I'm an introvert, and I do this naturally, this is learned skill. And then they tell me about something about their kid. And then I ask another question about that. You know, down to the point where like, what color is the grass? Like, what, what color paint? To really show how, how curious and interested I am in folks. And then from there, it's old fashioned network marketing, building relationships.
Yeah, that is so awesome. So, one of the things I remember, I'm trying to remember if this was Dale Carnegie. And I think it was Dale Carnegie, this is How to Win Friends and Influence People. Where if, if you want to be interesting to others, you must first be interested in them, right? So, you're chasing that curiosity that you have. So, so there were a couple of other things that we had talked about earlier today as well. When you, because we're going to be talking about how you get into conversations with people. But, I mean, obviously, there's a big question mark of like, what we say once we're in them and how we actually have conversations. So, there was another thing that you had mentioned, we were chatting about this earlier, about, about asking questions and what it means to ask good questions and sort of keeping the subject of conversation, right? Because I think for a lot of us, we're really excited, like, oh, I have a product for that, I have a product for that. But that's not the right move, is it?
No, and I've learned to do an invite. Like, it's about how, how you do the invite and to really honor people with giving them an out, like honoring the no. So, I might say something like, you know, this may, maybe, this may be a good time for you, you may be interested in this, you may not. And not now or not ever isn't a perfectly appropriate answer. You know, I know we haven't been talking a lot lately. I have these like, right, these sticky notes right here. I know we haven't been talking a lot lately. I've been wanting to ask you to take a look at the business side of things. But I've been afraid. My sticky note ripped. But at this point, oh, that was one I was more afraid. But, you know, the whole point is, are you interested in taking a look at this? You may not, you may, you may not be, and it's totally okay if you're not. And then if someone says, yeah, sure, I have a meeting with them, you know, do it one to one. And again, it's just more asking them questions about themselves and where they are at.
Keeping it about them, right? Yeah. So, there, there are two main ways that you are getting in front of people. It's really one main way, but you did kind of drop mention of that phone one as well, which I think is really cool. So, I would love for you to share with us, because I know that the, the primary way is going to be a little more detailed with the considerations for the networking and everything. But can you tell us a little bit more about your strategy for actually going through who you already have? Because you already have enough people to talk to, right? They're all in here and you have not sat down with every single one of them, none of us, right? So, how do you go about taking advantage of that opportunity to engage folks who you already are connected to and start moving them toward these conversations?
So, I generally care about these people, right? And so, as I'm just in relationship with them, you know, texting, I am always trying to move it toward a Zoom now. And hey, you want to hop on a Zoom? Maybe we're chit chatting back and forth about something. Maybe we do it month one, you know, month two, I'll send them another, hey, something, I saw this, this reminded me about you and your child. You know, you mentioned you lost your job. And I actually have, you know, a job that I love that, you know, I'm hiring, would be interested in that. And so, ongoing chit chat conversation in texting, but I, what I, the next step that I do take is leading to closing a meeting. So, you have to close a meeting to do a presentation to close a sale. So, it's persistence to ask over and over again, would you like to meet? So, a lot of people say no. So, who cares? So, two months from now, three months from now, I'll say, hey, we talked about meeting, that never worked out. Is this month any better for you? I know you were, maybe you were really busy last month. So, I'm very persistent to cycle back through the people to actually close a meeting. And I do the, the very classic, you know, what, what works better, evenings or weekends, daytime or nighttime? Let's just get it on the schedule, because we can always reschedule if we have to. Because once you get something on a calendar, they're much likely, more likely to reschedule.
Guys, I hope that you're taking notes with this. This is really, really important. There's no reason why, and Colette, I know this is something, we, we could both go on about this forever. There's no reason why you, as a network marketer, should not be conducting yourself with the same kind of professional considerations that a Realtor, or a doctor, or a consultant would be. Wherein, if you're going to sit down with someone, you make an appointment, right? You put it on the calendar. So, so Colette, your strategy is, in all cases, you are moving toward a set. We are sitting down together, it's on the calendar, we're both in agreement that this is what we're going to do, right? You guys are following that, right? That is, if you learn nothing else today, and you're about to learn so much more about how Colette gets onto a bunch of meetings every week, this is the most important thing. We aren't just trying to get Young Living in front of people, we are trying to get in a meeting with someone, because that's where the opportunity is, right? So, good. All right. So, Colette, how do you get in front of more people than you can manage to get in front of on a weekly basis? What does that look like for you?
So, we've been talking about my warm market, the folks in my, in my contacts. And if you don't know someone in your contact, like, how do I know this? Want to be deleted from your contacts, it doesn't matter. The other thing that I do, this was really key, because most people ghost you. Like, that's just, that's just the reality of things. So, I write back. I know you're busy, perhaps even overwhelmed, maybe you intended to reply, and maybe you just didn't know what to say. Here's the message I sent you last week. Would you at least honor me with a reply, even if the answer is no? I respect your no, but I don't know what to do with the silence. So, like, whatever you're feeling, like, I'm afraid to reach out to you, it's okay to say no, but just yes, no, maybe would be helpful. But most people write back, oh, gosh, I'm so sorry, yes, no, or yes.
Oh, my God, I wish I had a rewind button and could like, quote that and play and pat and like plaster it on the screen. That's the professional courtesy question. Janelle, right? Isn't that so good? Would you do me the professional courtesy of responding, I don't know what to do with the silence? Colette, that's boss. Okay, please continue.
Brooke for that, that's from my training with him. But it, but it is, the people, where I find my leaders get hung up the most is, well, I asked once and they, they didn't answer, they must hate me, cancel clear that, silly. So, they're just busy, just like I am. So, just persistent, I just, I just closed a meeting and a sale with somebody. For two years, I've been trying to get them on my calendar. He's this guy, he's like, perfect. He's even in my BNI group, he's part of my networking group, and he finally just settled. And, and I had been thinking, he kept saying, I don't have the money, I don't have the money. Well, he's a shopper. He just told me he like, loves to buy clothes for his wife, and I was like, ding ding.
So, he's gonna love this.
Back to him to say, let's just connect, and maybe I can help you. So, that's what you would ask me, what else do I do? So, with the fitness guy and with everybody, I'm looking for how I can help somebody else. So, it's the giver's gain philosophy from BNI, which is a networking group that I'm in, where when I'm meeting with someone, I'm not just meeting, my goal is not so much to close the sale, that's nice when that happens. But it's also to see how I can be a giving person in my community. So, I meet with a mold person, I meet with a fitness guy. And, and I'm sitting here thinking, what kind of referrals do I have? Because I have a whole referral network, and so does he, even if that person doesn't buy my product. So, I'm, so it's old fashioned business relationship building. And, and the reason that's so helpful is, it's a lot more time consuming at the front end. But on the back end, you have a relationship with the person. So, they're much more likely to stay on ER. My, my ER rate is 50% because I'm building a relationship with them. And it may take five or six or 10 conversations with them till they actually purchase the kit and, and move forward. But by then, I've taken a cold market person and I've made them into a, a warm market person, but trust me. And I've given them referrals and I've helped them. So, my initial meeting, it's called the one to one. I say, hey, you want to get on a Zoom and see how we can help each other? Everybody loves that. And then I, I always ask them first, because as I'm asking them about their business, I'm asking them about their family and their relationship, and I'm assessing needs. And then I can say, oh, my gosh, Young Living has this or, or that. And then I can tell, as I'm going through the meeting, if they're interested. If they are interested, I close the sale and I say, would you be interested in purchasing this? I believe these, you know, six things in the starter kit, 10 things in the starter kit could really help you. And if they're kind of like distracted, not so interested, I'll say something like, sounds like you're really busy, you got to take that phone call, can I circle back to you in two or three weeks after you've had some time to process this? And we'll see where we're at with that, I'll see if I can get some more referrals for you. And everybody says yes. So, it's that thing of continuing the cycle of you meet to meet to meet to meet, that's aribori.
Yes, yes, book a meeting from a meeting, bam fam, yes, old school, I love this stuff so much. Okay, so, so what we're talking about here, and this is like, just to kind of decode, for those of you who don't know, Colette goes to networking meetings, local networking meetings. And, and right now, you know, in the, I don't know, second February of COVID, this is happening virtually, virtually, all over the country, right? And, you know, there's BNI, so there's BNI chapters all over the world. So, you're in BNI, there are other types of networking groups as well that you could search for. So, if somebody wanted to, and I guess I'll just kind of, I want you to really dump out, like, here's what you're doing here. And, and I think everybody's really excited to hear this. But I think it's important for folks to know, if you hear networking group, or networking meeting, or something like that, and it either scares you, or you're like, I don't know, I don't know, that doesn't sound right to me. If you have not been trained as a networker, at least go give a couple meetings a shot, so that you can pick up the skills by practicing with other people who are doing the same thing. Oh, my goodness, it's so valuable for you, for just how you communicate. So, so Colette, you've done some free ones, but you've also invested in, in actually being in BNI. So, tell us a little bit about, you know, if you're going to find a networking group to be a part of, how do we know which one is right? And then what's the benefit of actually investing?
So, every one of you can go to bni.com and find local groups. And now that it's via Zoom, they were all in person, now they're Zoom, until we go back. And you can attend twice for free and get an idea of what this networking thing is. So, there, I was getting a, an account at my bank for a business account, and my banker said, do you network? And I was like, yeah. He's like, come on to our meeting. I mean, if I had known about this five years, this is how I won the Dream 1000, is because I joined and I enrolled like 30 people, 40 people that, that summer. So, the whole goal is for the, the business folks to come together and share what they do and swap referrals. And it totally normalizes the whole, I would like some business, please, right? And so, it's an hour, the BNI structure is an hour and a half, once a week, it's either a lunch or, or breakfast. And there's a $500 a year investment. So, that, yes, that's an investment. You also get, I hear about a lot of networking meetings through that. So, I get like a monthly email, here's 30 networking meetings you can go to this month. And that's why I have more than, I have more than I can possibly handle, because I can't go to 30 meetings a month. So, and, and, but you can Google like, networking meetings, local networking meetings. You know, women supporting women, you know, women entrepreneurs, like, there, BNI is not the only one. It's the best one, the most structured. And with BNI, you're the only person with that chair in that industry. So, I'm the only oils and supplements person and wellness person in my group. So, I don't have any competition, which is awesome. So, from, and the BNI model is, you meet weekly, and then you do a one, the whole idea is to do one to ones. So, there are visitors constantly filtering through my BNI meetings. So, I've signed up my 30 BNI people now, in Young Living. But beyond that, they, we all invite visitors. So, every time a visitor cycles through, that's another prospect for me. And, and I'll say to them, oh, my gosh, you're a mold person, I have people who have mold, they're trying to get mold remediation for their house. You, you know, and also, your folks are looking for health, so we would be, be a great match. And I teach them that an oils person is a great match for them. And then we get on a Zoom, I ask them questions about their business, they ask me mine. And that's the model, is we know we're doing a one to one, and we're here to help each other. Givers gain is the philosophy.
That's amazing. Yeah, we have a comment here from Penny, that, that BNI is also a teaching networking group. Like, they're actually teaching you these skills. So, you're not just getting this super valuable, all the people in this group are learning how to refer business to you, but you're actually picking up the skills in the process. That's well worth the 500 bucks a year. And you've, you've certainly recouped your investment from BNI, right? Yeah. All right. So, let's, let's talk about this. So, whether you go to BNI or not, so, let's just say, maybe you go to a chamber meeting in your local area, or you find, you know, women's networking, what have you. There's kind of a flow of like, what to expect. So, for somebody who's never been to a network meeting, a networking meeting before, how do they kind of want to prepare for it? And then what can they expect while being there, generally speaking, we're kind of being broad with this?
Yeah. So, with BNI is more structured, there's a little educational piece, and then there's a 30, you go around and do your 30 second, you know, elevator thing. Which I always do a story, right? Because I can say, oh, I sell oils, like, who cares? What is that? Cancel clear that. So, I get on, you know, Young Living, I'm Colette Colonon with Young Living Essential Oils. I teach people how to use oils, essential oils help the body do what it's supposed to do. Just last week, six weeks ago, I met this guy, he got oils, blah, 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 helped him. And here's how you get in touch with me, we have regular Zoom gatherings, and I would love to do a one to one with anybody, you know, who's, who's visiting today or who's interested. So, you know, I always tell a story, because that's, you know, in fact, you know, stories sell.
Okay, so that's, that's real simple, right?
And then there's, so, oh, and every, every week, somebody does a presentation. So, every two to three months, each person in the group does a presentation. So, I do a 10 minute presentation on, on Young Living. And you learn to say, this is a great referral for me. A great referral for me is acupuncture, massage, chiropractor, you know, natural health.
Excellent. So, you should, you should go in with a story ready, something, some kind of story, doesn't have to be your own. So, that you can say, hi, this is my name, I am an educator with Young Living Essential Oils. I help people help their body do what it's supposed to do. For instance, here's this story, I'd be excited to sit down with you one on one, all right? And then, and then on top of that, great idea, Colette, come in with who your person is, who do you want to know more of, right?
Because I don't know, the boring guy doesn't know what I need. He's teaching me what, what, you know, what's a good referral for him too.
Yeah, and, and you just don't go in and say, anybody? Because like, that's not going to work, right? Excellent. So, so once, so you do this, right? Like, you, maybe you have your 10 minute presentation, or you, you know, or you have your, your little, your quick little 30 second spiel, like you do with every meeting. Then you are, from there, the way these meetings work, you're actually connecting with one or more people while you're there. So, what are we doing next at a networking meeting? What are our kind of goals there? Are we like, trying to gather business cards? Like, what are, what are we doing with that?
When we were in person, you could more one on one, you know, connect with people in a room. Now, they do the breakout room, so you get randomly assigned to a couple of people. And, and I just did this a couple of weeks ago, where I met this, I got put in the room with a speaker, who was this dynamic actress in New York City. And, and we just got chit chatting, and I said, we're gonna finish our conversation, you know, how about we do a Zoom? And she was like, yes, yes. And, and she, and she went ahead and enrolled. So, it's just a numbers game of getting in front of enough people. Get on their duds, you know, I got on the week afterwards, and like, I didn't really, you know, but I, and I had three or four meetings that we swapped information, but they didn't, you know, purchase Young Living. But that doesn't mean they never will, you know, and I still stay in a relationship with them and go to their meeting. When you pick a BNI group, if you join one, you'll want to go locally, go, because you're going to be meeting in person, back in person eventually. But for now, you could go, it's actually an international group, you could go anywhere on Zoom.
Yeah, and with BNI, your first two meetings are free, right?
Yes, and they love to have visitors, because it increases their business. And, and when you have a BNI membership, you can also go to other BNI meetings for free forever. I mean, I could go to BNI meetings like, all day long and just keep gathering referrals.
That's amazing. And so, what you're basically doing is just committing to growing your network on an ongoing basis. You're improving your practice of communication skills by being interested in other people, looking for how you can help connect them to people that they need to grow their business. And they're doing that reciprocal thing for you by design. So, you basically have, through your BNI, a couple dozen people who know what you do, the kind of people you help, and who are basically tasked to help you get connected to people that they know who are that person. That's extraordinary. So, okay, so you've, so let's just say, we've, we've gone to our BNI meeting, we've introduced ourselves, we've had maybe one, one conversation. How do we transition, or how do we, in, how do we approach sharing Young Living and actually getting a new member from this, this person that you've met at BNI?
So, first I say, hey, Sally, you want to meet and exchange information, see if we can help each other? Sure, Colette, get on a Zoom. You said, you said you, you know, you do mold restoration, can you explain to me about that, how your company works, how long you've been with the company? And that leaves, you know, to my list of questions. And I just keep asking, asking questions. And, and eventually they'll say, oh, and, and what do you do? Although, what I do often gets sprinkled in their conversation, because I'm often saying, you know, this and a that. And then, I actually, on the Zoom, I have a presentation, and I'll often say, you know, would you like me to share the presentation, it's a nice visual? And then I can quickly flip through, these are the products, you know, Nyxha, thieves, oils, blah, blah, blah. Here's how to, you know, be successful doing a business with this. And, and at the end of that is the starter bundle. So, this is how most people get started. So, it's, boom, it's like presented, and I can do it in five or 10 minutes now, just zip through it. I don't tell them what peppermint does, I don't tell them what the oils do, but blah, 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 blah. I've told, and I'm, and I'm storytelling. Whoever the person is, if you're a woman, you're hearing about my hormone stories. If you're a guy, you're hearing about Nyxha and supplements.
I love that, I love that. So, then, so then, let's talk about how you keep in touch. So, let's just say, for instance, you go through the whole thing. You actually use a presentation from Richard Brook, right, when, when you're doing that specifically? So, those of you who are in his, we would love to have him on, and we're going to like, maybe see about doing that at some point, if you guys don't know who he is. But, but for those of you who know, you know. So, you go through that quick presentation, what if they aren't ready yet, right? How do we do the follow up and keeping in touch with people in our network who maybe we've shared with? I think, let's just assume, this is someone that we have shared with. What do we do with that next? So that we aren't like, hey, remember I talked to you about oils, do you want to buy them now? Right? Like, how do we, how do we do that right?
I'm usually setting up a next meeting saying, can I circle, this is all Richard Brook that I learned from. Can I circle around back in a month or two, or, or it's four months or six months? What would be a good time for me to circle around back? Well, you know, I'm in the middle of remodeling my kitchen, now it's not good, how about three months? Okay, great, I'm going to put it on my calendar, and I will get back to you in three months. So, three months, I write, I write to them, hey, we said we were going to cycle back, how, how is your business going? You mentioned blah, blah, blah. I'm an avid note taker, so I'm writing all this down. And would you like to get on again? I just did that with a magician guy. And he kept blowing me off, and he kept not answering, and, and I was just persistent, every week or so, I'd write him back. And finally, he was like, oh, I'd love to get on. And it's, it's now, for me, it's nailing down the meeting as much as, I think most of us on here can actually close a sale once we get to that part. And then if the sale isn't closed at the end of that meeting, I just, I just look at as I've made a friend, and we're going to keep, we're going to be in ongoing conversations. The other thing that Richard, Richard taught me is to, is to send information to people that's of value. This is the giver's gain. So, you know, the Iron Cowboy, you know, you mentioned you were in fitness, I just came across this video. Look what Young Living did for the Iron Cowboy. You know, you, you mentioned you were home and depressed and out of, out of work, I just found this article, it's hopeful and inspirational. Hope this helps you.
Excellent.
Adding value to them beyond, I want something from you, I clearly want to help you and, and care about you if I'm sending you information.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a discipline, right? Like, I mean, you're shifting your mindset here from, I have oils, I want to sell oils, or there's a rank I want to hit, or there's a dollar figure I want to reach with my check. You are, you're a professional networker. Like, that's why you're successful, right? So, where, where are some places? Obviously, Richard Brook is, is a key, key resource here. What are, what are some other things that folks might look into? You know, I know you have a training that you offer that's open to Team YL that you, you do monthly. It's not specifically always on networking, but you've got others, you know, but that is definitely wrapped up in it. We'll talk about what that means in a minute. But what, what kind of resources or sort of, you know, next steps would you encourage someone to take if they're wanting to start operating in this way? Becoming a networker to grow Young Living?
What steps for?
Well, yeah, so, so if somebody, I think for a lot of us, we didn't get started this way, right? Like, this, this idea that we should, you know, the, following the BNI type rules of the, what was that, the giver's, the giver's gain? That sort of thing. Are there any books or resources or anything like that, that you would recommend to that end, that you like?
Yes. So, I love Conscious Language by Robert Tennyson Stevens. Yes. So I love Conscious Language by Robert Tennyson Stevens. And that was the first piece to imagining the outcome that I choose and getting rid of the negative language. And then the Mach Mach Two by Richard Brooke, which is all about how to have motivation. I'm not going to tell you a secret because I want you to go buy his book. But there's a secret method in there, is very, very easy. And I teach it too in my coaching about how to fall in love with motivation and be motivated. And he has another book, Kimmy actually wrote it, his wife, their diamonds, Young Living Diamonds. And that is for your career for women. So his for your career for the other one, he will flat out tell you, like, ladies don't like it, like, women don't like it. So hers is cute and fun, it's got pretty whimsical, it's like ice cream cones and it's like really, instead of like, you know, bubbles, you know, get two to get two to get two. Hers is ice cream cones and she's fun, Kim, Kimmy is super fun. So I would recommend that book to be able to explain network marketing to folks. I wasn't very good at that before. And, and I highly, highly recommend the Momentum Masterclass Training. This is my second time going through it. And I am a naturally good network marketer, but I've really honed the skills of being better at actually shutting my mouth and listening to people.
Such an important skill, such an important skill. Would you reiterate the name of the book that you just mentioned? There is a request here, so we could type it out in the chat.
Mach, M A C H, two.
Mach two.
Yeah.
Awesome. There's another one, this, Colette, I brought this up when we were chatting earlier. A guy named Harvey McKay, a long time ago, wrote a book called Dig Your Well Before You're Thirsty. And it is all about networking, it is the basics. And then, of course, the classics, like How to Win Friends and Influence People, classic Dale Carnegie's, like Networking 101, like 100 years ago, and it's still true today. Right? Little, little bit of antiquated concepts in a couple of spots in there, but the, but on the whole, it's good. So Colette, we have a few questions for you. You guys, while we are going through these, I, I'm going to put Colette's website address in the comments here so that you, if you would like to join her monthly trainings, it's for her team, right? But you open it up to Team YL, you talk about oily stuff, you talk about business stuff, right? It's kind of open ended?
Yeah, in fact, it's the second Thursday of the month in March and it's going, it's called, it's, somebody who I met in BNI who does relationship message marketing. Her whole thing is how to write a message, how to speak to people. It's kind of like the color personality stuff. But she's really good about how to talk to people such that they will do what you want to do. So it could be spouses, children, you know, in, in sales. So this is a, again, this is a relationship now, I'm connected to her to more people who might benefit from that. But she's also getting to know me better and better. And she, her sister is Young Living, so I can't sign her up. But she did say to me, she's not good oiling and she doesn't have this and she doesn't have that. And I was like, right, so, you know, hopefully her sister will get, get oiling. And she knows that I'm way more into this than her sister. So, you know, she could potentially send me people as well. So
I love it.
Our next training was actually is more of a business training. You can go to colettepolino.com and go to events and it's our next one.
Yep, yep, definitely. And get on, get on her email list because she'll be sending out. Sometimes you'll do like little, little surprise ones, right? Because I think you had, you had a guest speak recently that was really exciting. I think you brought Bob Stevens out, didn't you?
On Saturday, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not just the events that you see. What's that?
He has a new book coming out, which is why I interviewed him.
Okay, so, so, so it's not just that, so there are events on the site, but sometimes there are things like this that come up that you, you want to be able to take advantage of. We've got this in the chat over here for you guys live, of course, we'll put it in the recording, colettepolino.com. All right, so let's go ahead and go through a few questions here for you, Colette, before we move into our website reviews. So Janelle asks, how many meetings that are a yes turn into duplicating what you're doing?
Well, that is why I am meeting with Ashley so often is because I choose to find people that are interested in doing the same thing. And I have taught this to my leaders and it hasn't, they're, they're, they're getting better at it, but they haven't duplicated as much as I have. Because I really don't believe I found the right people. I spent the last five years trying to force my friends and family members, I warm market, like, you're going to love this. Well, it was, it just wasn't the right people. So I had shifted my marketing now to finding the people that are like me and who want to do this.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, that's kind of, it's an interesting point and we do talk about that a lot. But, but it's, I mean, it's a deck of cards, right? You said it was a numbers game earlier, right? Like, you're, you're sitting down and meeting somebody, it's a yes now, or there are yes later, right? Later could be six months later, could be three years. And the same thing's the case with builders. You have to be emotionally detached and just keep doing what you know you're supposed to do, which is having, you know, an increasing number of relationships with people that result in that growth of network and growth of exposure. And you keep going and you're going to land on a goldmine at some point. You're always a few feet away from it. All right, Paige asks, any advice for someone you have primarily texted with and they will not commit to a Zoom call or meeting, but you know they're interested to know more? So what do you do with somebody who's insisting on sort of staying in the DMs? I know you've got good language for this.
So I've been getting really good at my Get Oiling website in the last month. In fact, that's why I had to slow down the marketing, because I'm, I love marketing, networking so much. I didn't slow down the marketing, I slowed down the networking because I just had to get my system in place. So would you like to, I've got an email with a 101 class, would you like me to send that to you? And there's some, some, and I, I used to have Project Broadcast, but I'm getting away from that now and switching over to the Get Oiling texting. So it's just continually saying, you know, you want to hop on a phone call or I miss you or, I mean, people just get on phone calls or Zooms with me. I just, I don't, because, because they just keep ghosting me, like, they're not that into it, right? I mean, I guess, I guess there are folks, so here's the deal. So if I'm, if I'm focused on Sally, Aunt Sally has to get the kit, right? Whenever you get attached to one person, like you are sunk, like you're just, your whole affect is sunk. So I have 100 people fishing poles in the water, I don't care what happened. I mean, I loved Aunt Sally, but I don't care that she gets the kit. I've got all, I'm so busy over here that I'm not thinking about the person who's not responding. If it's, if she's in my system of contacts, I want to follow up with her, I send her my ghost message, you know, the, the one that I read earlier. Like, can you just, can you just give me an answer?
Genius. That is such a good, like, I love that so much. And I think everybody, I think everybody watching this really loved it too.
About how network marketers in general, because we're not trained in network marketing, we don't know how to honor the no. So we push, 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 right? So we sound like just like every other network pushing marketer. So to really just say, you know, it's totally, this may not be for you, you may love it, you may hate it, I don't know until we talk. So let's, let's, let's give it, let's have a, have a conversation. And I'm totally cool if you don't get this, it's not for everybody. That's like a magic phrase that I got from Richard.
Yes, yes, not for everybody.
It took me a long time to accept that.
Yes, we have to be okay with it first and then we need to, to project that, right? And then people will warm up at their speed. You also, I mean, then you can get really comfortable with taking it off the table, right? Like where if you've maybe approached someone before, and this is, this is something I learned from Ray Higdon years ago, with the, the burned market strategy. So maybe you've pitched a few things to people in your, in your, your, your social circle and your family or your warm market. And you say, hey, listen, I got a thing I'm doing. I know the business part of this isn't for you, but I think you're going to really love the product. When you tell someone that something's not for them, what do they do?
Right.
They're like, wait, no, that's, maybe that is for me. It's genius. Okay, so here's a question from Jan. Hi, Jan. How do you network from groups on Facebook? Do you?
I have had zero success with that. Because of the rules of the Facebook groups, it's become such a thing now and people are doing it so poorly, right? Like, you know, blasting information. I know people do it successfully, but maybe I'm just in the wrong groups. And there's so much you can't say, right? I don't want to be in all these health problems or groups, they're downer groups. So I really haven't, and if I'm in a book club or whatever, flowers, I'm not even a gardener. So that, that hasn't been successful for me. And I, and I, and I've really perfected the art of telling a story on Facebook and the algorithm and all that. And I, I think I've enrolled one person on Facebook.
Yeah, I think, I think the real, the real benefit of going to like a dedicated BNI type of situation, and maybe there are groups on Facebook that are structured more similarly to BNI. Not sure about that, if you find one, maybe it'll work similarly. But the thing about these events that, that Colette is using, these, these business networking events, is that they are structured for a reciprocal benefit. If you are a part of this, you have to carry your weight to add value and everybody has to do that for everyone else. And so really, like, I, I believe that everyone in this industry should have a go at this strategy for at least a few months to build skill, right? And you may discover that it enriches your life so much that you want to keep doing it and it becomes your main way of finding people, like, like for you, Colette.
Well, that's the thing, you can't screw it up, there's the whole world out there.
There's always, always more people. All right, so a couple more questions. So Allison asks, how often do you send the articles and such that Richard posts? And mm, like the last one was a new Young Living video about one of the farms, something like that. I don't feel like my knows or members would be interested in. So how, how often are you sending content to people? For those of you who don't know, you know, the, what Richard Brooke teaches around this is, is to just basically touch back, but not touch back like, hey, remember me, I have something to sell you, but touch back with something of value. So can, can you expand just a little bit on that? And then, of course, Allison would love to know how often you send stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't send tons like that. He gives, in the Momentum Masterclass, he gives us so many. So he gives us a, a video, it's a four minute video, what's under your kitchen sink. And that one I do send to a lot of people. You know, again, this may be for you, may not be for you, but this totally rocked my world and I'm a lot healthier because of it. It would really be worth four minutes for you to check it out. So, and then, there's, there's a couple others. So those, those kind of videos I tend to send, I just do a lot of, good morning sunshine, was thinking about you and praying for you, you know? Hope things are going better in blah, blah, blah area, or just want to let you know I was thinking about you. Like, who, who doesn't love that, right?
Yep, yep, absolutely. All right, let's see, there's, yeah, there's a lot of people who are, who are, who are sharing their love or shared love of, of Richard Brooke's materials and insights, definitely his, guys, the, the stuff that he's teaching is the stuff that's worked in this industry. And what Colette's sharing with you guys today is the stuff that's worked since the beginning of this industry, right? Tech platforms, algorithms, you know, social networks, the, the doodads of all of this. They, they, they morph, they change, they come, they go. But the thing that lives at the center of it is your ability to connect with other people, to add value to their lives and to maintain and grow a network. And, you know, what we have with Get Oiling is, you know, at our core, contact manager to help you stay on top of reaching out to those people. So you've got their contacts and you can shoot one of those little messages off. Somebody left a, somebody left a great suggestion in here that we have that sort of, that, that ghosted as a saved reply. That's such a great idea. I love that one so much. Let's, I want to read that one again. Where did it go? I know you're probably busy and might be overwhelmed, but would you tell me the professional courtesy of responding? A no is fine and a yes would be great, but I don't know what to do with the silence. That's boss.
To talk to the person, say, I have been sitting here fretting for six months about reaching out to you. You mentioned your blah, 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 and I really think this could help you. And I'm so afraid you're going to be upset with me. I mean, if, if it really is that, then just put it out there. And, you know, don't try to fake and be, be real, be authentic. His whole thing is all about being authentic. And when you ask for a sale or say, go to your neighbor and say, hey, I want to show you something. You don't spend, what, what, how would you want to be treated? You would want someone to come to you and say, hey, I have a product, do you want to hear about it? You don't want to be talked to for 45 minutes and at the end of the conversation say, oh, by the way, you know, do you want a product? Because then that feels sleazy and that's what most of us tend to do out of our insecurity. So just come right out and say, it's all about the ask.
Yes, absolutely. Kathy offered here in the chat as well that she's in Networking Today International and she's had some success with that networking group. It's helped to grow her Young Living business, she's in a live group and can go on live, online all over the world with that group. So thank you for the tip, Kathy. Networking Today International is another option to pursue. Oh, that's so fabulous. So, Colette, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. If there's any kind of closing note that you'd like to share, the floor is yours, you guys, colettepolino.com. We've got that in the comments and we'll have it below the video for you guys to join her Team YL monthly trainings. Colette, go ahead.
If anybody wants to see the interview with Robert Tennyson Stevens, that is on my YouTube channel. And that is, that is what made me, got me to gold. And that's a whole other topic, but the conscious language and, and what I speak is what makes me a great networker. And if someone asked about my necklace, I got this from Cabbie years ago, but yes, it has a diamond and a crown on it. So this is my royal crown diamond necklace.
I love that. Where, how can we find your YouTube channel? I don't know if it's branded yet, we haven't worked on that together.
I got rid of all the Young Living stuff and it just has the interview, it's Colette Polino.
Okay, excellent. Who wrote Conscious Language? That is Robert Tennyson Stevens. I'm not sure if he's on Audible, but you should definitely look him up. Excellent.
Systems dot com. Mastery.
Mastery, masterysystems.com. And a couple of people are asking is like, what got, what was it that got you to gold? It was, it was shifting your language, right? So basically the stuff you learned from Robert?
Yeah, Dr. Sharnell, my crown diamond has taught us this extensively. And so I've been, I've done lots of trainings with him and rewrote my story such that I believe, you know, success is in me now, forever and always, easy and fun and easy.
Wonderful, wonderful. One more good, really good question here. Deanna asks, how does a typical ask go with you? So do you ask if they want to join a lead group or anything? Or is it really just simply you keeping up with, following up on that conversation?
A few months ago, I was introduced to a product line. I fell in love with it so much that I decided to create a second income with it. The company is blank years old, 20 years, 28 years old, but is growing fast. I know you've heard this story before and it probably isn't for you. It actually isn't for most people and that's perfectly okay with me. I'm reaching out to see if you would honor me by just taking a look and hearing my story. No is okay, maybe is nice, yes is awesome, what do you say?
I love it.
So these are, he has a whole bunch of scripts that he has given us and I'm so very grateful for Richard Brooke.
Yes, absolutely. Singing his praises, we've really got to get him on one of these calls. All right, excellent. And do you, you're not using, so I, I know, I could speak to this. Colette is not using a lead group on Facebook. It's not a thing that we're doing right now. There, there may be, there may be a lead focused community, like in a Get Oiling vault, right? That's, that, that's a thing for down the road. But what you're doing, Colette, just to kind of stay on top of everything, I guess this is a pretty important sort of, you know, sort of segue here. You are, you're, you're keeping up with, you're speaking with people every week, multiple people every week. You're remembering to follow up with people every week. I know you're really just kind of getting into the tech side of things with the Get Oiling contact manager and that kind of thing. What have you been doing or what have you found works best for you to make sure that you aren't dropping the ball with people that you are in contact with?
So I choose to speak with you about how to use that little reminder thing where I can, when it pops up, I actually do something with it. Right now, I'm the sticky note lady right now to remember. I mean, I'm very visual, so I have all my contacts in a pile and I, and I, and I cycle through them. But that's, I, I choose to know how to use the contact manager such that I am notified and follow through. Because it's, now that I know how to use it, it's awesome. Just hitting the campaigns, like prospect, you want, can I get some information? Sure, Bing, here's six emails, essential oils 101 that I've uploaded from Grow Workspace.
Yep, yep, there you go. So, so what you do then is you take, you know, if you want the cheat code to this, use a landing page on your site. And so what you do when you sit down with your person and your BNI or whatever, is you say, hey, look, I've got a sort of shortcut, a shortcut cheat code to get you into my contact manager. So I can, you know, send you what I need to, what have you, and it's going to give you a thing, right? Whatever your freebie is, here, go ahead and put your name and email right here, right? You could do that, or if you already have their contact information, you put it in yourself, whatever. So long as you've got their contact and your Good Oiling contact manager, when you're reaching out to them, however you're reaching out to them, have their contact card open, put your notes in the notes area, and then there's a to do. And whatever the to do is, if like we're setting an appointment for X date, go ahead and make that to do, to put that in your calendar and do that. This, this is what I walked through with Colette yesterday. She's like, I choose to learn this, I'm like, I choose to show you, we're going to get this done. And so now you do. So we're transitioning Colette out of her posted strategy and into the contact manager fully.
I have to get used to, first thing I do now, before I pass go, is I put the contact in Get Oiling. I don't, even before my phone, like I put them in Get Oiling, you told me that two years ago and I didn't listen to you. And so I put them in and then I'm getting people to my website, like, go to the website, go to the website, go to the website. So I'm not generating all the, the text and the, like, and I, I actually have these saved. I have these saved in my notes. I have my scripts saved in my notes so I can just copy and paste them. And I even do the keyword thing, but these are kind of long for keywords. But these are kind of long for keywords, I think. But so shorter messages, I can just do keywords.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, Colette, thank you so much for giving us all of this time and this information today.
Learn this, this is, this is fun.
I know you love trading and I can't wait to have you back to do this again. So you guys share some love with Colette. Let her know how awesome it is to have her here and be sure that you go to colettepolonome.com. And, uh, and also look up Colette Polonome on YouTube because she did an interview with Robert Tennyson Stevens. Uh, and there's surely more where that came from. Uh, so yeah, thank you. All right, we have two Good Oiling website reviews. And there is one question here that I would love to answer out loud in the Q and A. Lorna is asking about, so you're in HBR and you notice that it's showing you how to do stuff on AttractWell. Can I use the same info to build on the Good Oiling website? What's the difference? So answer to your first question is, yes, you do the exact same thing, exact, exact same thing. So the difference between the two is that Get Oiling is built completely 100% for your Young Living business. We connect directly with content providers that make your life easy uh, and make it easy for you to support your members and to sustain your business passively. In a lot of cases, doing things that would normally take a whole lot of time and effort. So if Get Oiling, sorry, if Young Living is, uh, is even 10% of your overall, uh, sort of business revenue strategy, you want to use Get Oiling. AttractWell does a lot of the same things, but there's actually a lot of things that AttractWell doesn't do, for your Young Living business that you really want to have, right? Like importing your tree and, and, and using the content from content providers and all that kind of stuff. So, um, so that is the answer to your question there, Lorna, and thank you. All right, so we have two people who are going to have a website review today, starting with Rhonda. Are you here, Rhonda? If you could raise your hand for me, we're going to get over to see your site. Hi, there you are. How's it going?
Good.
Good, it's good to have you. Tell me a little bit about what you are looking for in a review today. And I'm going to go ahead and open up your, your website to share.
That was an awesome presentation. Thank you, Colette. Um, okay, so I keep getting myself into messes with my website. But, um, maybe just a few questions. I think I'm almost to the point where I can now, promote it to my leaders and get them, um, orientated with it. So I've, I have the links working. I guess one of my first questions would be, how much do I gate and how much do I leave open? So for example, I have a link there in the middle of the screen that is testimonials. So it's, it's a balance, right, of how many pop-ups they get to enter their information and how much do you give them? Kind of thing.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, the, the short answer is where we're trying to convert leads into, um, or what, where we're trying to convert strangers or traffic, if you will, uh, to use the, the more proper language here. If you're trying to convert traffic or eyeballs, strangers into leads, meaning people who have given you their information so that you can reach out to them and move them toward a conversion event to get started with Young Living. You want to have exponentially more value forward information than you have gated information. So for every lead magnet, right, so basically what you would have behind a landing page, say like this, for every, uh, landing page or lead magnet that you offer, you want to have, you know, 20 pieces of content, 30 pieces of content that go to it, that they, uh, can interact with without having to cross a barrier. What we basically want to do is to pay it forward to the point where we're, um, we're building trust with them. And, um, and, and so that when they see an opportunity to take advantage of something that you're offering for free, it's easy for them to say yes. So, um, so for something like, um, for something like learning what Young Living members have to say, this is actually something that I would have out, like just out, uh, maybe a whole page dedicated to it. Or you could have, uh, almost like a section like this where you could have like little pictures of them and, and little blurbs of their stories. You know, maybe with the link to go off and read a bigger page. For something like that, I would, um, I would definitely not gate that. Because if somebody's curious, I mean, just think about you, like if you're, um, or you, you know, however long ago, before you said yes to Young Living, you probably wanted to kind of poke around and get a feel for things, um, before, um, feeling the sort of pressure of, of needing to, you know, show up and say, "Okay, I want to learn more about this," right? Or at least maybe we think about those of us who are a little less read, right? Who, who, who might feel a little more timid or skeptical or whatever. So, so the, the mindset here is just basically to, um, to give first and then expect that those who really like it and are ready, when they're ready, uh, that's when they opt themselves in and move themselves ahead. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking with that is, so I'm developing behind that. So I'll take off the kind of landing page on that. It's just a page that has a bunch of our member testimonies in there so that they can read them. And that, like, that's how I got started as I was searching for an answer and I come across someone who, um, had used Young Living products to, for the issue we were dealing with. So putting that out there would be a good thing. Now this one that you have up right now, um, goes, I've also created a page in behind this one. That is the whole class. Um, so it was another one that I was thinking of not gating as well.
I think that's a good idea. So, uh, or is, is it a sway class from like Grow Workspace or something?
It was a sway class, but what I did is I took the page template for projects and just created a page scroll through instead of a sway. I'm finding with people right now, they're afraid of sways. They're so afraid to click a link that might be, you know, a virus or something.
Right, yeah.
So foreign to most people. So I thought for this one, I would just create a page.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's a good idea. Uh, embedding it in a page is a really good idea. We did a training recently. It was actually, it's from, was it a couple of weeks ago now Greg, where we did the, um, we, we talked about putting sways together for Grow Workspace Platinum for their office hours. Um, we talked about, there was a funnel, uh, where, you could have a landing page, like what you have set up right now, that then goes to that class, that sway on the other page. But the other option that you may entertain, and again, just with the, with the mindset of, of, of giving more first before asking for their information, um, you could actually turn that page that you created into a landing page itself, if maybe there is a PDF download or something, right? Cause those Grow Workspace bundles have, they typically have some kind of a cool download in addition to the sway class and the, all of those other resources that you get with them. So you could say, you know, here, come check out this class so you can learn about the stuff that's happening in your cleaning care products. And if you want my, um, I don't know, like my, my checklist to take to the grocery store, then click the link below this video. And now they're opting in to get the checklist as opposed to opting in to get the class. So that may actually be, again, just kind of keeping in mind the, um, you know, the desire to give first so that they feel more comfortable and ready to enter their information and move ahead. Maybe you give the class first and then offer them a little something that's related to it.
And that's, that was going to be my next question. So if you were to go and look at that page that I created called Oily Home Makeover Page, it would, it has, um, a link there for the class handout.
Okay.
Though I hadn't circled back to that yet to see, um, how to link that, like where do I save that to and, um, so they can access it.
Got you, I see. So, um, this is actually in the, uh, I think we taught this in the Grow Workspace. Uh, we, we did that there. And also you just did the how to move your groups off of Facebook. And I'm pretty sure I did a training on, on how to attach a PDF. But here, let's look at this real quick. I'm in Colette's right now. Let me, let me come over here and go to Jane and show you real quick something, um, like, but you, you wanting to know like how to add your, your PDF or something like that? To, to be able to give away. Okay. So let's see, I think I have, oh, here we go. Here's gardening and oils. This is literally the one that we used as an example last week. So there's a sway class embedded here, gardening and oils. And then to get the gardening journal, you have to enter your name and information. So what you would do on this page is you would, um, well, I mean, you've already had them opt in. So don't make them opt in for this again. If you were going to use this like you would, um, like, like I have on Jane's over here, then this would be where they land. You just send them here, they go to this class and then they can enter their information to get the journal. But in order to get that, let's, um, let's look at that real quick. If you're using this as a landing page, as this is here, then this is going to say lead in the URL field, right? Now where it goes is to a PDF. So if we go to settings and we look at, we capture settings, there is this very, very long URL here that is the download. Or rather, that's, well, this is a different one. This is actually the, the instructions for setting this funnel up. But anyway, um, the way that we go about uploading that is simply from anywhere on your site where you have an editor. Just create some space, hit this more rich here, upload a file, and then you're going to find the PDF file that you want and add it. And once it's added, it's actually right here, when you hit insert and manage files. Here's the, the, the printable PDF right here. So you can grab the link to this and then it could be opened in a new page. So I would do that. I would actually on your page, so going back over here, because they've already opted in. What you would do here is they would click this button and here's how I would set that button up. If this will let me get out of here. So I would, in your button, I would put the, um, I would put the, get the journal or whatever right there. And then I would paste that link to the PDF that's now in your file section so that they can just grab it from right there on your page. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So if I make this, that it's just open and they don't have to enter their information, then I would, I would make it the lead.
And that's right.
In behind it.
And you can see in the, in the new gardening and oils bundle with Grow Workspace, we do have a full printable. Like when you get their bundle, um, it has the funnel bundle as well, which has the two different funnels that are pre-made. You can just swap out for whatever sways and downloads you want to use, if you don't want to use that particular, um, that particular set.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you've done a really beautiful job with your branding, by the way.
Thank you.
I'm a big fan of this gold, gold dash circle in Canva. It's nice.
Well, that's not mine. That's, this was pre-made.
Nice, okay. Good buying then.
That's Grow Workspace.
Okay, cool. I love it. Excellent. Yeah, no, you're, you're doing a beautiful job here.
Another question I have though is, um, so I've created another page to meet our leaders, so our Silver and Up people.
Okay.
Can you have a different contact pop-up for each of them? So it's, it's actually in the member area.
Okay.
And I've created a page in the, um, member group. I'm thinking of moving it to the front page, but I want this to be all of our, what, like not my website per se, but.
Sure. So, so what you want to do there, and this is going to be like on your meet the team page, which is a great thing to do for sure. It's not going to, so hashtag contact is going to be you, right? It's going to be you, it's going to be your account. But on the button for your leaders or on their picture, what have you, all you're going to do is in this URL field, you're going to go mail to, one word, colon, and then their email address. And what's going to happen when you make that link is that when someone clicks the button, it's going to open up their email. And, and it's going to have that person's address already in there so that they can send that email, right? So.
And what about texting? If some of the younger ones don't like email, they like text, can that happen?
Then you can, then you can just put the, uh, th- then you just put their number there. And if they're on mobile, which you know, if, if it's those younger people too, they're probably finding this on mobile. And usually when you see, when, uh, your phone recognizes that a thing is a phone number on a site. Um, and actually Greg, does, does this do it? Is it, is, does, does that work? Like number of what just happened?
All right, I think, oops. Yeah, so T E L, I believe will open up the phone. So T E L colon, if you needed, or if you wanted to send a text right away, you can do SMS colon. And then the phone number.
And would, would you put a country code here? So would it be like?
Ideally, I would think so. Yeah, start with a plus one, all that.
Or, or your country code. You're in Canada. I, I don't remember. What, what is Canada's country code?
It's one.
Yeah. Oh, it's one for Canada as well. Okay, cool. Yeah. So it would be plus one and their number. Yeah. So, uh, so mail to, sends to email, tell, no spaces in any of these, tell with a colon will make the phone call them. And then SMS and their number will open up their texting with that in the contact field.
Perfect, perfect.
Great. I learned something new. Awesome. Yeah, great job. You're doing good work. I'm, I'm really excited and impressed. I've, I've seen the member area you've been working on. You have clearly been working hard on it and your team is blessed to have you.
One other quick question. Thank you. Can we create surveys in here? Because we purchased a program from a couple of Young Living ladies that are doing Empower Groups. And one of the first, uh, posts in that power group is like a survey that they tell you, if I can find it here, um, sort of what their level of awareness is right now with natural living. And I thought that might be something to, that's sort of what, one of the, the second images on my front page there.
Okay.
So there's five options saying like, I'm just starting to learn how to find and get rid of toxins, right? To, I have a toxin-free home, well, mostly kind of thing.
Okay, okay. Um, all right. So the, the short answer is, oh, here's, here we go, survey. Okay, so this, the short answer, if I could find the page that I just opened, okay. So do you see this pop up right here? So this is a custom page, uh, and on your custom page setup, you can enter, I think it's like up to nine different fields, uh, where, you know, you can have whatever you want there. Trying to close out some of this stuff on here, so much open. Um, all right, so going back, where are we? So much. Here we go. Okay, this one, this one, sorry. All right. So, um, so, so this, this is how this works. Now, mind you, um, it may or may not do what you want on mobile. I think in this, it's actually working okay. Uh, but you, you're going to kind of have limits. Cause really what this is meant to be is an entry form for a lead on a page. That's what it's most designed to be. I use this as a sort of brief survey, uh, both for myself, for calls, uh, for people who might want to work one-on-one with me. And then this is something that clients use as well for their own purposes, just to kind of get a sense of, of where someone is before you offer them an opportunity to book themselves on your calendar, for instance. But, uh, if you want to use a survey that is more extensive in its capabilities, what you can do is, um, is very similarly to what we do here with say, uh, embedding a booking field, like you, this is a calendly booking field. If you use Typeform, uh, or some other survey providers, you could also copy their embed code into a custom page. So if you wanted more rich survey capabilities, that's something that you could actually embed onto a custom page.
Or in Google Doc, kind of thing.
I, I don't know about embedding a Google Doc, but you may be able to embed a Google Form or Google Sheet. But worst case, what you do is you actually, um, you, you send them to whatever that is. And then of course you can set that, that whatever your Google Form is up to have a redirect back to your website or to whatever page on your website you want.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for all of the, um, awesome advanced questions today. Everybody who nerds out over, over tech should have gotten a lot out of that. Good work, Rhonda. All right, Megan, um, are you here? Let's have you raise your hand for me, please. Excited to chat with you as well. How's it going?
Hey there, good. How are you?
Great, excited to chat. So tell us a little bit about where things are for you and what kind of feedback you'd like.
Yeah, so we are actually, uh, undergoing a total rebrand. So I very much led with all things oils, um, much like Colette had shared earlier that I was, you know, very much pounding the pavement, all things oils, but. Right? That doesn't speak to everyone. So my family and I have actually in the last. Couple of weeks have actually been going through a rebranding of, we were calling ourselves Oil Up Omaha. We're hailing from Oil Omaha, Nebraska. And now we are rebranding to Nest with the Nelsons. And so what we're hoping to offer folks is actually healthy home interior design sessions. Helping folks work through decluttering and really helping them rethink their spaces. Because right, we're all stuck at home. And we're all probably using our kitchen tables as our office space. And we take business calls in the laundry room and all sorts of weird stuff. So. We're just helping folks really rethink and breathe a new, fresh perspective into their homes. So what I'm hoping for today, Coach Ashley, is really just some help. In thinking through like, are we on the right track? What, what else should we be considering from transitioning? Our website as in like, I was just working on it like an hour ago. So. Very, very fresh. So I'm, I'm totally like open book, would love to hear your thoughts and perspectives to make this a smooth transition.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm holding in all the squeals right now. Because this is so good. This is. I love this. I love this so much.
That makes me so happy.
This is so good. This, this picture is amazing. Like, watch out, watch out, Magnolia. This is so good.
That's what I, that is what I'm using for inspiration. So thank you. That's awesome. I'm glad that's coming through.
Okay, so. All right. So I think that this, this is going to be the first thing.
So that needs to change. That's all, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, yep, yep. We want to change this. Because what you want to think about is when somebody lands here, they've probably been referred to you by. Content that you wrote somewhere else, like a Facebook post, or you, you showed up and you were like, I help people X, Y, Z. When they show up here. We need to help them solve a problem that pertains to the bigger problem, right? So if you ever saw the, the sort of the jawbreaker training that I did where we talk about kind of, we have this core at the middle of what we do. And all roads lead into it. Another way to look at it is if you're looking down into a funnel, right? Like this layer up here that's up at the very top, it's wide, there's a lot of people. But everything is designed to flow into that final space, which is this thing that lives in the middle. So whatever your lead magnet is here. It needs to kind of be like a little piece or a step or a taste or something that comes straight from the thing that you offer. That's at the middle of everything. So if what you're offering at the middle of everything is, you know, is, is, is a system around. Redesigning your home so that it works in a different way, then let's give them a way to get a win for themselves. That is maybe a part of the way that you work with people, but a thing that they can, that you can give away that will give them a, a real benefit they can feel. And, and they're going to be so excited that they get to do this. It's going to be, you know, it's probably something that is creatively oriented or fun to do. Or, you know, or something that makes it easier for them. But yeah, let's definitely make that something like that. You're doing so well. I love this. Okay. So the Healthy Home Movement is the Facebook community.
I, yes. So I just literally just updated that. I'm also working through, right? So I've got like the. Lead magnet, sort of Facebook group, the prospecting group. I've got my member group. Those things are still very much branded in the past way. And so I'm, I'm still, I'm in the process of thinking through which groups I'm keeping, which ones I should just simply rebrand those sorts of things. And so that is the updated lead magnet that's offering healthy home hacks. I think. We started out with seven. We decided that was too many. So I dropped it down to three and made it like a two-part series then.
Okay. So what I would recommend that you do here is tweak the copy. If it's, if it's, it's, it's three things. When they use those three things, what happens? What are they able to do? Right? Because people aren't necessarily out there looking for actively searching for healthy home hacks. They're looking to, they're looking to solve maybe a more specific problem. Maybe they're looking for organization ideas. Maybe they're looking for diffuser recipes, like what are the specific things outcome wise that they're looking for? Because what we're asking to do, think about how. How cagey people are about their, their information. Rhonda was just saying, you know, a lot of people don't even want to click a link to open a sway because they don't know if it's got viruses or something. People are going to have a little bit of trepidation to put their name and email into something. We've got to build up a fair amount of trust. And also set a really clear expectation, right? So what is, what is this going to do for them? And we need to make sure that we're clear enough. About what it's going to do for them so that it's compelling enough for them to do something. And we shouldn't like, you know, worry too much about whether or not it's compelling enough. So long as we are clear. The people who find it compelling are going to do something with it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, so what are, you know, what does it do for them? How, how long does it take them to get it done? Right? What is? When I work with clients, we talk about currency, which is like literally is what's important to your person. And then, you know, in timeline. So this is going to, you know, follow these steps and you're going to solve this problem or currency. In 30 minutes. Solve this problem in 30 minutes. Meal planning solved 30 minutes. That's compelling to the right person, right? So just be thinking about that kind of thing. I mean, you know, brand wise, this is, I mean, this is pretty excellent. Your content. As you continue shifting your brand content and sort of the message of it, like that's going to handle itself. Your brand is Play-Doh. You can make it what you want, when you want it. And it can evolve with you and you can kind of poke it and shift it as you need. Because it's, it's really a personal brand, right? Which is as malleable as we are as humans. So the other thing I was gonna say, what was I gonna say? No, I think this is excellent. Are, you're going to provide a way for people to.
Yes.
So I remember what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Or tell, rather, this is more of a tell. On your blog.
Yes.
Do excerpts.
Tell me more. What do you mean?
Yeah, yep. So when you're in your blog, it's under the advanced settings. So you've got your featured, you got your featured image for your blog here. When you do an excerpt, it's going to show the featured image. And, and then you're going to. Or you're going to click, you want it to show, you get to choose whether it shows a featured image, show the featured image. And then just grab. A paragraph from this, from this blog post. And then copy that and paste it into. The excerpt section. And that way, when people land on the blog page, they aren't landing here and having to scroll through the entire body of every single blog post. They can actually scroll through and see. Okay. So there's good news and some free stuff. There's, is your kitchen working? They'll be able to see, you know, 20 times more options of what to read. And pick the one that's most compelling to them.
Okay. I love that. That's such a great suggestion.
Every second or every, like almost every nanosecond of time, someone is spending on the internet going through information. Think of it like, like it's, it's a, it's a big weight. Right? And, and we're asking them to carry a big weight. The sooner we can get them to what they're looking for, the answers that they want, the more they're going to love us. And then where they're going to want to kind of hang out and find more stuff. Because it's a, it's sort of like a, it's like a psychological feedback, right? They're like, ooh, dopamine hit. I found a good thing. I'm going to go find another one. So the easier we can make it, the more compelling it is for people to stick around. And you've got a lot of great content here. So, so yeah, I would do that. And then also another thing you might consider, you know, since you're branding and you're clearly doing a great job at this. Is take some of this amazing branding that you're, that you've got put together here. And, and create a blog post. Featured image template for yourself in Canva.
Okay.
Get, and then that way, this, this picture has a title. That has your branding and maybe it has your logo on it, right? And that's something that you'll very easy, easily be able to repurpose and to share out on social media so that. When you share it, maybe this blog post on Facebook or wherever, they're not just seeing a pretty images of roses and macarons. They're seeing. This pretty image with your branding on it and the name of the blog post. So it's more compelling for them.
Okay. I love that. Such a great idea. Yeah. Thank you, Canva, right?
Right, right?
Thank goodness.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, definitely. Cool. Yeah. So anything else? You're doing a great job. Really, really.
Oh, gosh. Well, thank you. I guess like my, one of my. Larger questions, and I'm sure it is for, for so many of us, is right, how? How best should we be getting our website in places where it's most applicable to our audience? How do we, how do we elevate? And maybe this is a little bit of a conversation on SEO too. But do you have any advice as we are undergoing this rebranding perspective? What, what should we be keeping an eye out for? How can we get the most eyes on our website?
Yeah, definitely. So I don't train on SEO specifically. There was a period of time where I was very, very, very much technically into Facebook, but that stuff changes every day. And, and it's just not really the thing that I follow personally. Just about any recent release, a lot of free even. SEO training, just teaching you about keywords, where to put them, you know, like, do they go in a header? Do they go in the title? How often should you repeat them? Those types of strategies around keywords and keyword research. Highly recommend for you, especially at this stage, because you've established what your brand is, you know what you're offering. I think you've got a pretty clear idea of what you want to be offering up to build your list. Now you're focusing on content to get more traffic here. This would be a good time for you to start looking into some different ways that you can leverage SEO. And maybe kind of zhuzh up the, the titles of your blog posts, for instance. The, the short answer to that and sort of the, the mindset that we want to have about it is think about what your person is Googling. You know what the problems are that they have. Or if you don't, definitely start writing down a list of what those problems are. And then just start thinking from their shoes. What questions are they? Asking? Where, where are they? What tutorials are they looking up on YouTube? What authors are they searching for? What, you know, what kind of boards are they looking for on Pinterest? I would think that Pinterest could be an extraordinary strategy for you because. So much of what you're doing is design oriented. So when you go and, and you create your, your blog posts, and this is an easy thing to do in Canva. You can, you know, the resize option in Canva, when you create, so you create a thing, resize, look for Pinterest. Copy, like, you know, resize and copy that into a pin, reformat it. And now you've got a pin that points back to your blog post. Make an Instagram story format and, and basically use the content planner in Canva. To send out all of these little iterations that point back to your blog. The first thing that we need to make sure that we're doing is just making sure we're everywhere. It's okay if we're not getting the titles right yet. If we are getting the body of work there and getting the links out there, because that's part of what the search engines want to see. Is that there is a lot of content and that there's quality content. And then, and then you can always go back and adjust as you learn SEO, the keywords. And the titles of your blog posts and stuff like that.
Okay. That is awesome. And can I ask one last question? Okay, I'm curious, just to get thoughts on, so right now I'm not using a whole lot of colors. In my, in my branding, because I wanted to keep it very. I want it simple, yet striking. And so right now we are using black. I, that like darker gray, a little bit lighter gray, and then like that, just little bit of punch of that like darker teal color. Is that enough color? Is it not enough? What is it pleasing? What, what would you say?
I like it. I find it clean and lovely. If you're able to make it work, I think that having this image of you guys. Stretched to the edges of the page might be even nicer. Right? That, that might actually be an even nicer look. And then instead of having your logo. Over the, like actually on the image itself, maybe have this be separate. And fixed to the top left portion. So we actually did a training on the, the section background editor. That goes over what all of those different things are. We did that pretty recently and it's in our, it's in the knowledge base for good oiling as well. And then one thing that you might consider, and I, I like the dark teal, gray, white, black. It's clean. It's straightforward. It's striking. I would encourage you to, to echo the font. So upload the fonts that you use for your logo to the site so that you can kind of repeat those elsewhere. That I find to be more effective than just more color. But you could also play around with texture. Texture and pattern and stuff if you wanted to, and even in a really subtle way. So there is a, there's a Canva sort of background setting. I believe it's called Blog Banner. Is the one that I use. And then you can actually go and find Canva elements and repeat them to make wallpaper. Or, or find like a textured background image and overlay your colors or, you know, like your brand colors, like maybe this teal or a gray. And increase or decrease the transparency so that you've got, you know, sort of a range of textured backgrounds. Let me see if I can show an example of, of what that looks like. Megan published hers fairly recently. So she's got her barn background here.
That's cool.
Let me see on her healing barn page. Yeah. So you see like this, this background right here is actually sort of like a crinkly sort of canvas. And then this one, you can, you have to really zoom in to see, but we've got like a chevron back there. So you can do that kind of thing. You don't have to have a bunch of color. But you know, sometimes you might want to add a little bit of texture to a section or something like that. And so using the. The blog banners, I think Jackie's has this too. She has a couple of those. Yeah, like this is a Canva blog banner. She's kind of got that same, you can see it's kind of almost like a watercolor-y thing happening. So. I mean, if you're into, yeah, if you're into that, then you know, you can play around with that kind of thing. But I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think that you know what your people are going to be into and what they're going to find pleasing. Just make sure it echoes everything else that you're putting out there aesthetically.
Okay. That sounds awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate having a chance to do this today with you, Ashley.
Yeah. And I appreciate you sharing. You guys, Rhonda and Megan, both of you, beautiful, beautiful work. Just so cool to see this stuff happening on our site and you guys just really, really doing amazing stuff. So good work. All right. We have one more quick question before we go. Question from Candace regarding a texting a keyword. You're trying to figure out how to set up a keyword tag when a person texts to my two-way number, then they get the tag added to their contact. I'm transferring from PB and I used to say text tip to da, 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 and I'll add you to my weekly messages. All right. So Candace, when you're creating a campaign. You can use a text and keyword. You obviously need to have your good oiling numbers set up. For that to work. But once someone texts that keyword, they're going to receive that campaign and their contact card will have that tag applied. Good question. And don't apologize. You're not off topic. This is literally the time to ask that question. So thank you. Awesome. All right, you guys, a couple of amazing reviews today. And, and thank you again. Big, big, big thank you to Colette. For sharing your wisdom. And I look forward to having you on again. So let's, I want to Brady Bunch us back in, everybody. And. Thank you for being here. And we're, we're excited to come back and do this again next week.
Thank you. That was fun.
Thanks for joining.
You're very welcome. Nice to see everybody.
Bye.
Bye, guys.